All right, so we're returning to open session at seven, I can't see what that says up there, seven eighteen PM on September fourth, two thousand and twenty four. Okay, this is going to be a pretty brief meeting, I think, especially compared to last week, but I'm still going to jump around because of who's here and try to get them home early. Okay, so we're going to start with the Board of Health and Chelsea Malinowski.
Do you have to do a public comment first?
I don't have to do it first. I'll get to it.
All right.
I'm still going to do a public comment. So, welcome Taylor, welcome Chelsea. So, even though we know who you are, will you introduce yourselves?
Sure, so I'm Chelsea Malinowski. I'm the Chair of the Board of Health, and this is Taylor West, and she's our newly appointed Health Director as of this afternoon. So, I'm very excited to announce her in her new role.
And what was her previous role?
Well, prior to today, it was interim Health Director, and then prior to that, it was nurse slash Assistant Health Director.
All right, so just to kind of tee this up, everybody saw the proposed IMA that would represent the agreement with Northboro to share a newly created position called Health Agent, which, as we know, is also on the warrant under the SAP changes that are proposed for the special town meeting. So, you also should have seen the email from Chelsea where she has forwarded to us the Collins report that they had commissioned that was released in June. So, what I told Chelsea a few minutes ago, and hope everybody agrees with this, that was a lot to digest in a short amount of time. So, I thought tonight what we do is listen to Chelsea, let us, Taylor, and see kind of where they're going, what they want to do. what they want to do, and try to understand how they're gonna implement the recommendations here. There's three recommendations in this: do nothing, stay where you are, then two and three. And then three's got two parts to it. So I can tell from the IMA which one you're really going to. So I think it does educate us tonight, Chelsea, you know what we need to know, so.
Yeah. So not too long ago, I was sitting on the other side of the table where you all are, and the Health Department, Board of Health, came in front of us and had executed on contracts that I think most of us at, on your side of the table, kind of were startled by. And so at that point, I decided to run for Board of Health to try to get to where we are tonight. And I think, you know, at the time, the Board did what they thought they needed to do to get through the pandemic. And, you know, I think we learned a lot from that process. And as we, as I kind of got acclimated to what the Board, the Board of Health was responsible for, my view did adapt through that time as well. I think we had, you know, really heavy medical support on the Health Department, which, which we needed at the time, we didn't know what was coming. And, and so that's why we engaged with Collins Center to do essentially a staffing study and look at if we were being efficient and effective with using our PHE grant, which is a Public Health Excellence Grant that we get from the state, and that's a renewable twelve-year grant that we first received in July of two thousand twenty-one. And that's with Northborough, Westborough, and Boylston. And we have benefited greatly from that grant. We were not doing food inspections prior to that, including at the schools. So that's really enabled us to utilize shared resources to be able to do the many requirements that the Health Department should do. So through kind of building on those relationships with Northborough, Westborough, and Boylston, when we were awarded the Best Practices Grant by the state, Northborough and Boylston were very interested in looking at what other best practices we could achieve, not necessarily using grant funding, but through town funding and shared resources. So that's, that's really the presentation that Collins Center came up with in June that you had in front of you to read. There is a lot of information out there, in there. They did a deep dive, they interviewed many stakeholders across all three towns. And I think at the time, the, the goal of the Board of Health was to have an opportunity to look at regional health services, health departments, but not necessarily that we needed to implement it right now. We just didn't want to have to go through this all, all again in five to ten years as kind of the landscape of health departments continues to change. And so that's why you essentially have three options in that report. Boylston was not interested at all in regional health.
Services.
Services, thank you. So that's why they're specifically called out, and it's actually an option three A. Boylston's totally separate. Three B shows Boylston in there. So we, we needed to be respectful of what their wishes were. So, so that's kind of like future, this is what it would look like if you wanted to go regional health departments.
So Chelsea, can you go slow here?
Yeah.
Because I was surprised at the terminology. So there is shared health services.
Yeah.
And then there's a regional approach. And regional sounds like regional with our high school, it truly is a separate.
Correct.
District, has its own budget, I guess, at the town.
Yes.
So two really different things.
Yes.
Okay, so has the Board of Health gotten to the point they kind of know which one of that they want to do? Would they prefer to do shared services?
Yes.
Okay, because I know that's what, this was the IMA you're showing us, is that.
Yes.
Okay, so regional is off the table for the moment?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And part of the reason for that was, as you know, Kristin Black from Northborough, their Health Director, just left. And as that happened, Northborough actually consolidated their Health Department and their Youth and Family Services Department to one department under one department head. So that wasn't something that Southborough Board of Health was, was looking to look into at this point, because I think it would be complicated if we were to do regional health services plus youth and family. Like, it's still separate in Southborough, so it just didn't make sense for us to even pursue that option. And that happened as this study was unfolding.
I think we had done like most of the interviews, and then Kristin had announced her leave, and they had explored this model at the same time as we were finishing this, so it's kind of the timeline.
She went to the state.
Okay, so that makes sense. The IMA is three years, I assume, right? So you could tear it up in three years and not renew it.
Right.
Once you regionalize, you're kind of stuck with it. You know, it'd be much harder to undo that than does not sign a new IMA.
Correct.
So I assume that's got something to do with wanting more flexibility and see how this works?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. So really where we're at is option two. And Boylston wasn't really ready to commit to another shared position. So the way that we constructed the IMA with Northborough was that if at some point in the future, Boylston decided that they wanted to join in this relationship, then it would be easy to add another town in. We already have a relationship with Boylston, because don't forget, Dennis Costello, who works for us, is also the Health Director in, or the Health Agent in Boylston. So, so there, there, we do have some crossover, and our Northborough Shared Services employee through the PHE grant also does work in Boylston.
Okay, so Dennis is a Health Agent already for Boylston? I know he's Inspector, but he's literally called a Health Agent there?
He is the Health Agent in Boylston, he's their, their employee, their one employee, yeah.
Okay, so we contract, he's a W-2 employee.
Yeah.
For Boylston.
Correct.
Okay, but obviously a part-time employee?
He.
In Boylston?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, because he's working here too.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right.
Yep. And what we did to come up with the fifty-fifty split between Northborough and Southborough is we, so Taylor actually does a lot of the inspections that this, we want this person to do. So let me back, back up and explain kind of why we need some more support from that perspective. If you remember, we, in twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two fiscal years and twenty twenty-three, we had a thirty-hour Health Director, Dr. Heather Alker, and we have had Taylor at forty hours. So in FY twenty-three, we reduced the Health Director position from thirty hours to nineteen hours. And this year, Dr. Alker has moved on from her position. So with that change, we took the opportunity to reorganize and make a Health Director who's also responsible for the nursing portion of the Health Department. So Taylor is now responsible for all the Health Director responsibilities and all the nursing. What I want to get off of her plate is all the inspections that she does, hence the Health Agent coming in and doing that in addition to some, I mean, this person will be taking over the septic as well over time.
Why does Taylor do inspections when you've got a food inspector with the, the group of four, and then you've got Dennis to do the septic? Why does Taylor do inspections?
So I, we also are required to do camp inspections, body art inspections, pool inspections, housing inspections, which our shared person does most of, but a lot of times I end up having to get involved in them as well, so.
Okay, so you tend to do the non-septic ones if you do that?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
I was shocked that we've got four pools and two body art places here. I don't know where they are, okay.
Whatever.
I've used both of them, actually.
So, so what we did was we took all the inspections between Northborough and Southborough and just put them on a spreadsheet, and it came out over the last five years pretty close to fifty-fifty. So that's kind of how we ended up, because don't forget, Northborough is only like seventy percent septic or a hundred percent septic. They don't have any camps or one camp.
They have like one to three camps a year.
And we have.
Ten to twelve.
We have a lot of camps in town. Mm-hmm. Yeah. So, so that's really where we ended up with, with that split. And Collins, Collins Center, as part of their report that you'll see in their conclusions, is that we were too far on the medical side. We needed to come back to the inspectional side, especially on the septic. Right now, we have Dennis in the office two and a half days a week. So if you have an open septic that needs to be inspected on a Friday, and you, and he doesn't get to it, it's open till Wednesday. So we're trying to close that gap so that we don't have those scenarios. And, you know, obviously, we're still sharing this person, we would still share this person with Northborough, but they're right next door if they need to shoot over and do an inspection, you know, and then go back to Northborough if that's what their day is.
All right, so to summarize where you want to end up, so you have a new job description for the Director, which includes inspections and nurse, so it's gonna be both and supervisory.
Health Director.
Right.
Yeah, yes. And then, so the goal is that Taylor would get her registered sanitarian license.
Yep.
But not be in the field, right? So that, that way she could actually supervise.
This new position that the IMA is set to deal with is simply adding a Health Agent shared between the two towns, it's as simple as that, right?
Correct.
Okay, so your staff is gonna be you full-time.
Yeah.
That person we pay for at halftime.
Yeah.
Dennis is still the contractor.
Yeah.
And you've got Barbara Speary halftime.
Correct.
Yes, a little bit more than halftime, yeah.
So I did the math real quick. It looks like to me that that would have like almost no effect on your budget, because you're going from fifty-nine hour, fifty-nine and a half hours to sixty hours. If you're forty, the Health Agent's twenty, I mean, that's what you're, that's, that's the change, right? And I would think that the Health Agent would make less than what Dr. Alker made. So I would think budget-wise, this isn't going to affect your, what your budget would have been if you didn't change anything.
So the only difference, though, is that this person would reside on the Southborough payroll.
Right.
And therefore, the entire expense would need to live in the Board of Health budget, but it'd be offset by your local receipts.
Right, so we understand that accounting-wise, your budget goes up more than what I just said, but in the end, it nets out to.
It does. Yeah.
Nice question.
Yep, I'm done.
So is this the budget, this one? It shows for FY two thousand twenty-five, three oh one, nine eighty-four?
FY twenty-five, three oh one, nine eighty-four, yeah.
So then would you, so line fifty-one, one ten is the Health Agent, right? Eighty thousand? Would you just, for the net impact of it, would you just subtract forty thousand?
Yeah.
That's happened.
Yeah.
So it's less than the preceding fiscal year?
Be careful, she adjusted that previous fiscal year.
No, it's not, it's not, well, if you tip the forty thousand out, it would be less than my previous fiscal year?
Right, yeah.
That's.
Go back to.
Yes.
Offset by forty thousand dollars in local receipts, right?
Yeah.
It looked to me like we were ahead by about twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars per year going forward.
But did you read the front notes? She adjusted one of, this is not, if you look at fiscal year twenty-five, that's actually not the budget approved at town meeting.
Right.
Right, but my twenty-four number in that tab is right.
Two seventy-five.
Two seventy-five, two twenty, twenty-four. That was the FY twenty-four budget.
We're just trying to make a simple point, this does save money.
Yeah.
It does.
Yeah.
It does. And that was the goal all along.
Okay, so Chelsea, Andrea's trying to get you to compare two seventy-five, right?
Yeah.
To, if you do fiscal twenty-five, take the three, twenty-four, and take off forty?
Take the three oh one and take off forty.
So two sixty-one.
Two sixty-one.
Okay, so, all right, so, so this is not, you're not here because you're worried about the budget impact.
I'm not.
You just, you've got to do the IMA to get this done.
I'm just pointing this out because we're gonna have so many budgets that show increases that I'm looking for any budget where we can show that we have a decrease.
But unfortunately.
I'm pretty sure Chelsea's well aware of, you know, what we're looking at budget-wise.
So unfortunately, though, in the budget book, it's not gonna show that, because you're not gonna have the local receipts to offset it.
So they, remember, they lowball the local receipts. So yeah, local receipts go up a little bit, but it won't go up forty thousand dollars.
But this is easily explained.
Unless we make them do it, because it's, it should be fairly guaranteed money.
Yeah.
But we might be able to persuade them to truly put the whole forty in local receipts.
Right. And, and the other thing that I committed to Brian on this, and I'm gonna be close, is we're already into September, so this is not, my actual budget, my actual budget for FY twenty-five is not gonna be three oh one. And he did not budget for benefits for this. So as much as I can transfer to, he, he knows that I'm gonna be close and that he may have to help me on the benefit side, but I should have most of it covered.
So she's not proposing to change her budget for fiscal year twenty-five that's been approved? All she's trying to do is get us to get the IMA approved so they can hire the person. The SAP is gonna be taken care of with Taylor meeting, and then she thinks she's got enough room in her budget to make this work for fiscal year twenty-five because of the part-year nature of the hire, right?
Right. Yeah.
I, actually, I have one, it's an observation rather than a question, is, I think this is a good, good plan, and I like it. I think when we talk about doing things like fifty-fifty splits, we need to make sure that we capture all of our costs, which include benefits, of course. But they also include things like facilities, administration, and accounting, sort of overhead that, you know, the, we're only going to bear, and, you know, the, our, if we are the supplier.
Yeah, but other towns got the same physical costs, I don't think that would count. But things like Brian's, you know, the payroll service that we use, there, there may be a few things that we should add on besides this.
I, I think we ought to have a standard for how we do this sort of thing, so that, you know, when we're, when we're capturing the cost, we are capturing, you know, occupancy and admin and, and accounting. It's a, it's not a huge sum, but it's real.
Well, right, and Northborough houses all of the grant people that work for us, so we already.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not.
You know.
I think we ought to have.
Offsets.
Offsets, it's not a big deal.
I don't agree, help me, Chelsea. This person's gonna sit at both places, not just here. So it's not like we're furnishing the office and Northborough's not, fifty-fifty. So I don't think even though occupancy costs into this. Now, we do need to capture all the truly cost of payroll, which Brian and Carla and our payroll person know how to do. That certainly should be done. But I don't think there's any occupancy cost to consider with this. You tell me if you disagree.
No, because.
Okay.
They'll be here.
Our building is our building.
I think my.
I mean, there's.
I'm, I'm happy to concede the point. I, I think my point was that there are some of these other ancillary costs there where we're the, we're the host community, we're going to bear, and we ought to, we ought to have sort of a standard for applying those sorts of things.
I agree, you look at this, I just don't think occupancy counts.
I, I conceded the point.
Northborough's gonna pay for their office, we're gonna pay for our office. It's the actual cost of the person this time that I think we're trying to, to capture. So, you know, water enterprise fund, the, the calculation we do there is different. So I think that we just need to do a really good job of capturing all the costs.
Yeah.
That are on our payroll, that we have to pay for because of employing this person.
So Chelsea and Taylor, I, I think this is a wonderful idea. Can you just talk a little bit about item number four, payment, and how that's gonna be?
You're talking in the IMA?
Yeah.
Okay.
How that's gonna be executed?
So this, I actually worked with Carla on and said, how, how do you want to handle this? And one of the, one of the things that I debated, debated doing was actually doing a revolving account, which I, I don't like revolving accounts, and so I can't believe I would actually.
I think I would.
But then I don't have to, you know, then you can match your revenue with your expenses a little bit easier. But they want it on a quarterly basis, and they'll just invoice Northborough, and then for the last quarter, they want it in, the payment in June.
To get there before June thirtieth.
So Carla will handle that?
Yeah.
It sounds, I think it's great. Who wrote the IMA?
Sorry.
That was a question I had, too.
Well. So this is, we've never done this before in Southborough. We don't have an IMA for an actual shared employee, so I went to town council and I said, I need help. And so she gave me a few drafts, and I kind of just took everything I liked and wrote it.
This is Liz Leiden?
Yes.
So Chelsea wrote it, Marguerite?
I think it's written.
Yeah, it's written.
Thank you. Liz was helpful, very helpful, as usual.
I wonder if there's a template that other communities had used, so that's where Liz got some of this stuff.
Yeah, or there are other, you know, other pieces, but it wasn't all relevant for us, and then I liked things in other.
Yep.
Yeah.
One question I had is, why didn't Westborough want to play on this? Any idea?
Go ahead.
I mean, I think, I think they just weren't in a place that they were interested right now, so.
They seem to have the same issues we do, certainly, it would seem to be a natural.
But they also have Health Agents already.
They have a big staff, fortunately for them.
We just, we're just a much smaller scale than they are, and I just think that they have different.
Different needs, definitely different needs. I mean, they're super, super restaurant-heavy. I think they have like really three capable people of doing, they pretty much are doing full-time restaurant inspections.
Well, they've got tons of restaurants.
Yes, they do.
So they just have a different playing field than we do.
Okay, so the plan is.
Population's actually half of ours.
What was that?
Boylston's population's half of ours.
Sorry, Westboro.
Oh, I'm sorry, Westboro, yes.
I think they're about forty thousand.
Well, Westboro's twenty thousand.
Twenty.
I think Boylston's like six or seven.
Okay, so the plan is for a way to digest this report more fully between now and the seventeenth, and then we're going to vote on the IMA or vote on amended IMA, whatever we think is appropriate, if there's corrections, whatever.
Yeah.
On the seventeenth, because they've got a, they're trying to get this done by around the sixteenth. So that's one day after that because Northborough has a need for us to get it done around there because they're ready to go.
Sixteenth of September?
September, yeah.
So North, uh, Northborough Select Board's voting on it on the sixteenth. Southborough Board of Health, we have a meeting during the day on the seventeenth. So any changes that you have?
Well, I've got a couple that I just.
Okay.
Yeah.
I've got a few questions myself.
Hold on a second, let me just put in and track changes so I can track them.
In section five point two, I think there's just a word "and" missing. The towns may, in a writing signed by the Town Administrative of Northborough and the Board of Health in Southborough. And then the inspectional services scope of services. And then in the, the exhibit A is.
Hold on, Andrew, I missed that one. Say it again.
So in five point two, after the word Northborough, shouldn't the word "and" be there?
Okay, yeah, thank you.
And then in, the exhibit A is not filled out, right? It's.
It, it, I will get you the updated one. I added that after.
Okay, and in the venue section in eight point five, so it says, it refers to Middlesex County, but it really should be Worcester County.
Steve, this is very copied, I think.
And, okay, to Al's point about in the like, you know, absolute perfect world, you would have this scientific way of finding the exact additional cost of the town. I think it's, this is just saying salary, benefits.
I think that's a noun there.
I think the additional, for example, the cost of the town's liability insurance might be marginally higher, the premium, because of having an additional salary on our books, but it's too complicated to figure it out.
No, I think that's the kind of, but I don't think, it's Wartman's Comp you got to worry about, not, not that. But, yeah, that's the kind of cost, you absolutely should pick up all that as far as truly the total cost of employing someone.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, I think just having a simple standard of.
Just one model that might help is that when we adjusted the water rates recently, one of the reasons we did that, it was to capture more of the true cost of the cost associated with the water services provided by DBW, right? So maybe that helps if, if.
Yep, that's a good analogy.
However, bill went around, what about that?
So what about seven six? If either town incurs a cost, fee, or expense not included in an agreed-to annual budget, said town shall promptly invoice the other towns for half of cost, fee, or expense. You don't like that?
No, no, I, I think it's fine. I think you just have to be upfront with them about, you know.
What I think they're suggesting too, Chelsea, if you've seen the proposed invoice for Hopington, if the water connection agreement gets signed, it's quite complicated as far as trying to truly come up with all the costs for supplying that water, right? Direct and indirect. So it might behoove us all just to attach a spreadsheet with everything that we know goes into it today, right? So there's no question, there's no argument.
Okay.
Okay.
And then a question I had about, so in nine point one, this is probably something that was just borrowed from another agreement where you say each town is liable for the acts and omissions of its own employees and not for other town employees. So North, Southborough's not liable if a Northborough employee commits a tort and that generates a claim. But because the shared employee is a Southborough employee, then Southborough would have a hundred percent of the liability associated with that. So you might put in something that Northborough agrees to split the cost if there's any judgment that's not reimbursed by insurance that was caused by an act or omission of the shared employee or something.
Regardless of where he was, what he, what they did. That's a great one.
Shared employees, so it's a shared cost.
The chances of this happening are extremely remote.
Doesn't matter till it matters.
But.
Yeah, right, okay. I think that's a question for, that can ask Liz.
Okay, so I'm surprised no one brought this one up. I was waiting to see when we go back to the cost. To me, the one that's hard to compute is the pension as far, because the pension's going to be on our books. It's going to be our pension, and I don't know what you do about that, so.
So I think that's, that's part, I mean, the way I'm looking at it is we have this grant for twelve years that they have.
And those employees are on Westboro's books?
No, Northborough's, Northborough's a physical agent.
Okay, so they're doing it, they're doing the same thing for us there?
Yeah, right now, they hold three soon to be five employees.
But it's only for full-time employees, so it's.
Michael, the nurse.
Yeah.
But that's all paid out of the grant, so it doesn't hit, I mean, we don't get a bill for that. That's the grant that pays.
That's the grant, so we don't have, but the pension, I don't think would come out, it's not going to come out of the grant because they're on the Northborough's payroll.
Yeah, I agree, it's Northborough's, Northborough's going, same thing, they're going to have the same issue with those employees down the road.
So they have three.
Is this something you could easily figure out the dollar amount of it, or no?
No, you could try, you could make an estimate.
Actuarial.
It's a defined benefit plan, so it's hard to do, but we should probably try to put something in there for that. And then they may say, well, wait a minute, what about those employees are on our books?
Yeah, I don't think it's, that's why I don't think it's where the bill.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So maybe talk to Brian about it and see what his opinion is as far as what we should do with that.
And, and the recent study that led into the water adjustment rate might be helpful as a model for how to do that.
I just don't want it to then come back and say, okay, well, then you're going to split the three other employees.
Yeah. Okay, so are we trying to make suggestions tonight and we're going to be done with it? Because.
I, I think this is a great proposal. I mean, I remember, because I was on the advisory committee when COVID happened, then we had this sudden, very large increase for the Board of Health. I was always concerned, I agreed with it, but I was always concerned that we were overreacting to, you know, a kind of a one-time emergency. And I like to see how this is becoming more efficient. You know, over time, I think I learned there's a lot of responsibilities that the Board of Health do that aren't, you, you don't think of them as strictly health-related, right? They just legally have to be done.
Yeah.
And through, you know, when you say regionalization, that causes heartburn from some people, particularly, you know, some town meeting members. And this is a way that you, you, you get a lot of the benefits of regionalization with some more flexibility.
Yep, I agree, I think this is a real step forward. And Andrew, you've got a couple of things that I had on my list. One question I did have is, my read is this is actually a hundred-and-eighty-day agreement. It says that you can terminate with a hundred-and-eighty.
Yeah.
Days' notice during the term, so effectively, it's a hundred-and-eighty-day agreement if things go south, which is not a bad option to have, you don't expect to do that. Also, I think Kathy, your point on pensions and other things, I don't see any easy way to actually define all that stuff clearly enough beforehand to get it in an agreement that's not a hundred-page agreement kind of thing.
Chelsea, Brian will hook you up with the woman who he deals with on the pension side. She's our consultant, she's really good. She can probably give you something to use, some rule of thumb.
Okay.
She won't put her pencil down, she'd be paid for that, but she will give, she gave me a rule of thumb when we were doing something recently, so she might give you a rule of thumb.
But there is dispute resolution language in here that I think is, can serve to deal with any real problems that come up and people say, I'm not being treated fairly, so there's a mechanism to deal with that. And I think that's good enough in this case, so.
So to Anna, I thought Andrew was going to say something else about advisory. So advisory absolutely supported the concept of regionalization. And Chelsea knows that, Chelsea may have been on the advisory the last time we did that. So that was never the argument with Select Board. So advisory wanted that to be pursued and they have in spades. We've got so many more services right now than we had before. I mean, did you, what she said, we never had food inspection before in this town, and we have that now. You've got more, there's like four things that we've got that we didn't have before because of this grant that looks like it's going to last for a long time. The thing that advisory and Select Board split on, though, was, and this was at the town meeting at El Gonquin, was the budget where they were increasing hours for probably Taylor and maybe Heather, too. And that was a vote that won by one vote at that town meeting. So Select Board wanted that, advisory didn't. But hindsight, I think, of course, you know, we know how talented Chelsea is, that this has come a long, long way from the days that we didn't have all these services. So kudos to you for what you've done, and Taylor, you too. Chelsea says wonderful things about you. So I think this is certainly going in the right direction. I think you've got a great board to work with. So I think this is much improved. So I fully support what they're trying to do here. All right, so do we want to give her any more comments on the actual IMA? I read it and it was fine, but I didn't think we were going to vote on it, so I didn't really try to nitpick it.
My questions were answered.
Am I agreed?
Nope, I think it's great.
Al?
Yep.
All right.
All right, so follow up on the nine one for the liability.
Yep.
Depending on what town, town happens in, and I, there were a few comments and I'll make sure you get the appendix.
Kathy, does youth and families share services with Westboro?
No, but the discussion that Chelsea kind of alluded to a minute ago, where Northborough had voted to combine their health department with youth and family services, is maybe something we should discuss going forward, not necessarily youth and family services and health, although some towns, some towns have their senior center and their youth and family services and their health department as one, health and human services is what they call it. Some just do human services, council and aging, youth and family. So there's different permutations here, and maybe as we try to find ways to be more efficient, that is something to discuss in the future. Let's get through this, right? But let's keep that on the table, too, because there is definitely crossover between what youth and family services does and what senior center does. It depends on the age of the people they're serving. So I think we should probably bring that forth at some point as a discussion.
And the schools are in there, too, actually.
There's a lot of ways. Okay, so do we want to, right now, go ahead and vote on the IMA as amended by Andrew, knowing that Chelsea's going to deal with the liability issue and attach Schedule A?
I think if we just, I mean, we've given some comments, we get it back and then it's going to be consent agenda for the next.
Okay, but the seventeenth, what, so there means, we, we could do a quick meeting if we wanted to, to do this, a quick Zoom.
We don't need to do that.
Okay.
If you're not happy with it, just let me know. I just want to have a, a clean version from all.
Well, Chelsea, why don't you go ahead and approve it at your seventeenth pending Select Board approval that night? Do it that way.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
All right?
That's fine. You're not going to have any substantial changes. It's going to be minor.
So we just want to see cleaned up version with these things added, with Schedule A done.
Okay.
And then, you know, show a spreadsheet of what you're going to collect as far as salary goes. And then we will approve it. Everybody agree with that?
Yep.
Okay. So thank you, guys, for coming in person.
Yes, nice to see you.
All right. Okay, so let's do ARPA next because that's why Chief Puntini is here. So stay there for a minute, Chief, because we've got other votes before we get to what you want. We will call you up as soon as we get those out of the way. Okay. So Carla continues to watch us like a hawk to make sure we're going to spend every single penny by December thirty-first. Where's my spreadsheet? Okay, all right, Carla, keep me honest. Okay, so she has gone through and talked to every single department that has outstanding ARPA projects that aren't done. And we know right now that we've got two hundred and, where's mine? Because I've got the, there we go. So we've got two hundred twenty-three thousand dollars roughly that we know for a fact is coming back that we need to vote on for something else. So what we did is we went to Capital and Capital took a look at what's coming for next year and gave us a list of things we could accelerate to make sure this all gets spent. And they've also listed things that they know can get committed by the end of this year, which is what we've got to happen. It doesn't have to be paid for, but it's got to be ordered, whatever it takes. So that's what got passed out to you a minute ago there. In addition, Chief Puntini has requested that we consider adding a, upgrading our fire notification system, fire alarm system, and that's gone through Capital. And Capital has approved that being on the plan and has also put that on the list of something we could accelerate. So if you see that email, so that's from Jason Milonowski. So, and I, we've, I've also talked to Bill Koundiff and I know what he thinks we should do or he agrees what we could do. Okay, so here's one proposal. Again, we've got to spend two hundred twenty-three, which also includes National Grid, Sam. So bringing back the fifty-two thousand that's left in National Grid. So we've got two twenty-three that we know we need to commit tonight. And there still may be a little bit more coming back after the rest of projects get closed out, which we should know soon. Okay, so Bill Koundiff has one, two, three, four, five things on here. The thing that would work and kind of give, and also give Chief Puntini what he wants is we could do the trailer for the transfer station, which Bill kind of likes, one twenty-five. We could do the stationary learning system for seventy-five. Then we can go up and pick one of the first two from DPW, either the asphalt hotbox or the double drum roller to round out the two twenty-three.
Bill is in the audience, actually.
I know. So he's there in case we need him. So I haven't said anything so far that he's not well aware of.
So Kathy, you began by saying that the two hundred thousand is coming back. What is it coming back for?
A lot of different things, so let me, so these are projects that have closed out and they had leftover money. Okay, so the ARPA consultant, the Northborough Johnson Road Culvert, Townhouse Furniture, Jim's Clickers, the Tritya rooftop HVAC unit, the fin mold remediation, the town survey, the mental health clinician, they didn't use that at all, and then National Grid. So that all is.
All things that were completed basically under budget.
Yeah, except for one. The survey is the one that the seniors want to do, it's just no one's done it, so we've, we've pulled it back. So we can still put it in their budget for next year, but.
All you needed to do was sign a contract and.
Yeah, but there, there was some, there's some discordment with that contract.
Do we ask, do we ask Bill which of these things he wants to?
We already did, so.
Okay, so one and?
He, he, as far as the numbers go, start with the trailer for the transfer station, one twenty-five.
Yeah.
Okay? Then we go down to fire and do the stationary learning system that Chief Puntini wants to do.
All right.
Right? And then we go back up and pick up the, one of the two that are under Bill's, either the asphalt hotbox or the double drum roller.
Well, if you got two twenty-three, I think the asphalt hotbox comes pretty close there.
It does, and we're going to have, Bill will just have to pick up the little bit left over in his budget. So it's not going to be perfect. We're, we're going to go over a little and not stay under. We're going to spend every penny of this. So if he goes over a little bit, he, I'm sure he can find it in his budget to, to do that if he's over three or four thousand bucks.
Bill's okay with that, fine with me.
Yeah, so I'll move that we transfer from the available ARPA funds seventy-five K for the stationary learning.
Well, hold on, we've got to put it in first. Well, hold on, we've got to put it in first. So this is the first vote, Al. So let me just read this. I move that we transfer 223,463,62 out of the following projects. ARPA consultant, 29,760. Northborough Culvert, 5,51850. Townhouse Furniture, $5,000. Clickers, $755. Tritya rooftop unit, $30,000, $4.71. Fin mold remediation, 28,15919. The town survey for the seniors, $35,000. The mental health clinician, 36,650. National grid, 52,61622.
Second.
Okay, now do we want to discuss this?
So for the, the turnback of the money for the senior assessment, does Doug know about this or?
Not, well, not that I know of. But I have seen an email, at least one or two, where it's clear that he thinks someone else is handling this and there's not. And this is September 4th and they've only got, you know, three months before you get to Thanksgiving, before they've got to have it truly.
Committed.
Committed, done, signed, sealed, and delivered. Not the survey itself, but at least a commitment to do it. So we can leave this out for now. We can modify the motion to take that out for now.
Yeah, I just, I just think where we had a meeting and he came to us and requested this and we approved it, that we should at least give him an opportunity to, if he wants to keep it, to make the case.
And again, I'm, I'm fine with this, with the survey, but I think the survey as proposed didn't seem to me to be on point for what we needed at this point, so.
Agreed.
I just want to get substantial value from it. I think it's useful.
Yep.
But as proposed, didn't seem to me to give us that.
No, I think there's some objections. It was reasonable to it.
But we can, you know, leave it out.
Okay, so let's leave it in for now.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm going to modify the motion and everything I read is still in the motion. That totals 188,463,62. I've removed the $35,000 from, for now, moving it out of its survey bucket.
So.
So we made the motion.
Second.
Okay, so any further discussion of the amended, amended motion?
Yeah, question. That then basically changes our previous concept.
Yep, but we haven't done that yet. We'll go to that next. We'll have to take out the first one.
Hot box.
Same amount of money.
Okay.
Okay, we're putting it in, we're taking it out, the buckets is in now and putting it in the general tax relief bucket. And we're going to move it out of that next, okay? All right, everybody agree with amended motion?
Yep.
We've heard, we had a motion a second. Okay, all in favor? Okay, so now it's in the tax relief bucket. Okay, so now we've got to use that. So the motion would be to use that 188,000 to do two things. One is to, let's see, 188,000.
75K for the, the stationary learning and 113K for the trailer for the transfer station.
And that's 200, so we're going to be 12 short. Okay, and that's fine. We will have $12,000 before it's over, so we're going to be overdrawn temporarily. Carla and I have talked about being overdrawn temporarily, okay?
Okay, so if you want to just leave it at 125?
Yep. No, do the 125 and 75, do them both. Because they've got to get going if they're going to do this. That's why we got.
Understood, so, okay, so you want to do 125 rather than 113?
Yes, I'm going to do 125 because that's what you said it costs and the 75 for the stationary learning system.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion as far as what to move out of the tax relief bucket? Okay, all in favor? See, Chief, you didn't have to come.
It was easy.
All right. Now you know what your time is. You've got to get this done quickly.
Yeah.
All right, so that's the ARPA vote. So we're done with ARPA for the night. Okay, so you're done.
I have a question with the staffing study. Do you want me to stay or?
We're not going to really get into it, other than possibly something that doesn't affect you, affects Chief Newell. So you're welcome to stay, but we're not getting, we agree we're going to do this after town meeting because it's so complicated, there's so much in it.
I just want to make sure about.
Okay, all right. I know what Carla wants. Carla, I know what you want. Okay, so everybody, I've got to go back to one more vote. Okay, so Carla believes that we never confirmed one thing that relates to our website improvement and McCall of hearing room upgrades. So I'm going to make a motion to, to confirm that we have allocated $85,000 of ARPA money to the website improvement bucket and $20,000 to the McCall of hearing room bucket.
So moved.
Okay, all in favor?
Second.
Okay, now see if Carla wants to still come over. Okay, now that's what she wanted.
She's muted.
All right, so now you're welcome to see what we say, but it's going to be fairly limited as far as what I, I think so, now one or five people, I think that's where it's going, okay? But we'll see. We may talk about the whole thing from beginning to end. Okay. So now, Chief Newell, why don't you come up? So we will go right into the reason you're here. And is this, do you still, are you still holding the place for this and the warrant for lieutenant, for police, for study?
Yes.
Okay. Welcome again. Okay, so we started talking about this at the last joint meeting with advisory as far as what we might want to still go ahead and do for the special town meeting as far as starting to implement the suggestions in the staffing study. We didn't vote, neither did advisory, so we've had now the week to think about that. So my question is, we've still got a warrant article that is placeholder. Do we want to propose doing anything to the fiscal year '25 police budget that is recommended by the staffing study? Al?
I think there's a case to be made for lieutenant. The, yeah, we have certainly seen the police department in particular grow over the last 10 years. I sent, I asked Carla to pull together the, the data on the growth in the, in the police department. I think the rest of the part, the study, I think we need to have a lot more discussion about, I think the tax impact is real. And we, before we start talking about a lot of major tax increases, I think I want to see in one place all of the things that people want and what they cost, and I think we need to communicate that to the public. Because the, the list of wants is long and I think we need to be, do a better job of communicating, you know, what that list of wants is and what that list of wants is going to cost and how it's going to affect people's tax bills. You know, we're going to go ask for a huge sum of money in the spring and I want to see it all on a single sheet of paper where we can say, you know, these are all of the things people were talking about. Expanding the police department is one of them, but there's, the list is long, it's a mix of both capital and operating programs, and I want to see it all in one place. I want that communicated to the town and particularly to town meeting so that as we start voting on these things, we have a comprehensive picture of what is in the pipeline and people can make choices based on what they want versus what we've done in the past, which is sort of the penny packet approach.
Okay. Marguerite?
I support a lieutenant position and I think it should go to the town meeting to vote and see if the residents of town will support it.
Well, we have no choice, it's a budget.
Right. But, but I think it should be done sooner rather than later. I think we have a pressing need and I think if the residents don't want to vote on this right now, don't want to support it right now, then we'll know. But I think right now, it's, to me, anyway, we have a pressing need and I think that should be communicated to the town so that they can vote on this.
Sam?
As I mentioned last meeting, I think the need is there certainly. And with the staffing study, I think waiting longer, we'll still come out with a recommendation for the need of this position. And my view is why wait? Let's get it in the pipeline. It's basically about a half year's impact now, which is not easy. On the other hand, I think the, the need justifies it and I'm supportive of going ahead with this.
My position's pretty much the same as Sam's. I think that we're reaching the point where I'm kind of, the points about this are just getting very repetitive. We've already had a thorough discussion about this in the last budget cycle. I don't see the reason to, to wait. I think we should do something to start, you know, showing some concrete signs that we're addressing some of the needs that we have in the police department.
And I agree with all four of you. So Mark wrote us a memo that tells us what the financial impact would be if we basically had this position effective January 1st of '25. By the time town meeting's over with, I mean, you've got Thanksgiving and Christmas. Now, depending on who you hire, right? But is that okay with you if we do this January 1st?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so I will make a motion to support adding a second lieutenant to the police department as of January 1st, 2025, at special town meeting September 30th.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Now, in terms of how this gets translated on the warrant, Article 14 that raises the additional money for the EDC, that's pretty much a model of how you would word it. Would this be part of the same article or separate?
Well, he's, we've gone in article for implementation of staffing studies, so that's where I assume we'd go, right, Mark?
Yeah, right. So Article 16 right now is what we have for that. So we had put together all the financial articles.
Yeah, so it'd be 16.
So it'd be Article 16, a separate article, right?
Yep.
Okay.
And it says implement the results, the implication for me is that all the results, so we probably ought to say results relative to the police lieutenant position or something.
No, I think.
Yeah, no, that, yeah, that wording is going to, that was a placeholder language, so that, that wording is going to change to be more specific to the position.
It's going to be basically the same as 14, except you adjust the amount and the description of the position. It's for the second lieutenant position for the police department.
Right, yep.
All right. Everybody agree?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
So Chief Puntini, so we're done with ARPA and we're done with that. But obviously more to come once we get past town meeting as far as really digging into the study and figuring out what to do, including lieutenant for the fire department.
Understood.
Okay? All right, thank you. All right, so I think we've taken care of everybody that's here, so now we can go back to normal. Okay, so now, so we're going to start with, we're going to do public comment next. Vanessa, anybody in the audience with a hand raised?
No hands up.
Okay. Mr. Cook, do you have a public comment?
Hey, do not.
Okay, thank you. Okay, all right, so moving on, let's do our reports next. I don't have anything in my report. We did a lot last week, we only met a week ago, so nothing's happened to need to report on that I know of.
Sure, I'll just give a quick report on the fact that I filed on behalf of the board our CPA application for the town common railing and sent that in. Haven't heard any further word, but I'll keep everyone posted. And Al submitted the application correct for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
I have not heard anything. I asked for acknowledgement of receipt, but have heard nothing.
Okay, so that's great. So you're reporting as a select board member as far as what you did for the Affordable House Trust, so that's great. Okay, Mark?
The only thing that I, sorry, yeah, the only thing that I have, and actually the chief has just left, but he just issued a personnel order today congratulating one of our newer officers, Theo Davis. He successfully completed the department's 12-week field training program and he now will continue his probationary period with the department, will be put on shift and, you know, will begin, you know, you know, regular shifts with the department. So congratulations to Officer Davis. We look forward to great things.
Well, I have one more.
Go ahead.
Real quick, which is the chief's, the town administrator, Sam and I will be meeting with the Westboro rec next Monday, just as sort of an introductory, we have, you know, a long laundry list of questions and I thought we ought to bring them up to speed on where we, progress to date.
Okay, we'll talk more about the article when we get to the warrant, so we can really try to understand where we are at this point, where we're going with that one. Okay, let's move on to consent agenda, very short again. So we've got the minutes from the 6th. Anybody want to hold those?
Yep.
I do, too. Okay, so held. Anybody want to hold the Eversource request? I do.
I've got a question, yeah.
Yeah. And actually, Eversource person is supposed to be here tonight. He is here? Okay. And we're going to just close the warrant for September 30th, 2024. Okay, so let's start with the minutes. Sam, go ahead.
Same comment as last time. Let's see. Two, line 247, pervious instead of impervious. And that's it for me.
Line what?
247, eight, six minutes.
This is ringing a bell. We discussed these same minutes before.
We did discuss, but we didn't.
We didn't, we, we were so tired, we just zoomed down.
That's right.
But that was the only one. Line 247, pervious instead of impervious.
Okay. All right, Marguerite, anything?
Same thing as before, use, use rec as all the words before.
What line?
The initials. Oh, sorry, 155.
So line 155?
Yes, just to write out what RECC stands for the first time you use it.
Right, which is Regional Emergency Communications Center?
Yep.
Remember, Bridget's listening to us, we've got to talk so she can understand what we're trying to do here.
You're right, yeah.
You know, this, this is hard, what she does. I mean, look at this, so. Okay. Sam, and you did it. Al, anything?
Nope.
Andrew, anything else?
All set.
All right, I've got a few. So line 50 should be plural after positions, so the case and the positions are still being advertised. Chief Newell replied that is the case and the positions are still being advertised. So line 50. Okay, line 116, let's see, 12 signs of pipeline property, 350 houses on the list, not signs, 350 houses on the list that qualify. Everybody agree with that? It's houses?
Yep.
Right? Okay, on, let's see here. On line 149, starts out with subcommittee. Subcommittee would present the latest cost estimates, so I'm trying to insert the word cost between latest and estimates. On line 148, at the end of that first sentence, project to recommend for a vote at a special town meeting expected to be held in April 2025. On that same line, 148, she stated the NBC, it's finance, subcommittee, not financial, finance. And then on 156, Mr. Hamilton reported that the virtual, Marguerite, I'm surprised you didn't do this one, lowercase instead of capital case, that should be small, small V. Rec presentation was made to Ashland instead of sent, so changed sent to made. Okay, then on line 233, greater flexibility in funding CPA eligible projects, period. So again, funding CPA eligible projects, period. All right, and that's it. Okay, everybody okay with those?
Yep.
All right, Sam, you want to make a motion?
Move that we approve the August 6th, 2024 minutes as edited.
Second.
All in favor? That was fun. Okay, the Eversource request, can you bring over, these are here?
Yep.
So it's Mike Conkey, I think, K-O-N, is that, Mike, am I saying it right? Hey, Bill?
Yes, Michael Conkey, good afternoon, everybody. How are you?
All right, thank you.
Good evening.
So Bill, you want, since you're here, you want to describe what is being requested for the town to agree to from, I guess it's NUCO?
Yeah, well, it's requested from Eversource, but NUCO is requiring some upgrades, I guess, to, to the gas line that runs along Route 9 between Cordaville Road and Parkerville Road. So Eversource is currently geared up to do the work. You may notice some of the sections of pipe that are lying adjacent to Route 9. The work's going to occur roughly over the next two months. They've had a few locations where they've been storing their equipment and materials and unfortunately they keep getting bumped from location to location to location. They're on the verge of beginning, I think, the night work. This work's going to occur at night. They're on the verge of beginning this work. It's looming. I know they've had a lot of activity out there now. So they did approach the DPW and asked if we had an area where they could have their contractor, which is from Boyleston, stage their equipment and some materials at the DPW site. Because it's such a long-term thing, I wanted the select board to be involved and make, make the ultimate decision on this. The area is going to be located past the transfer station area. You may or may not know, we do currently have a staging area that's adjacent to the swap shop.[1701.52] It's gonna be generally in that area. We're going to widen it somewhat. I spoke with Melissa Danza from the Conservation Commission. And Melissa said we're well beyond the resource area, so it shouldn't be a problem from her perspective. But as this is night work also, I wanted the select board to be aware. I discussed this with Mike about noise. He's agreed to turn off backup alarms, not bang tailgates with dump trucks. And when I say this, it's not gonna be that active a location, it's gonna be a support operation for their field work, which is largely excavating, stockpiling material along the side of the road, backfilling that material, using some sand bedding. I expect some of the sand to be stockpiled up at the DPW. And there may be some lighting at night. The lighting would not be directed towards Middle Road, it'd be directed towards the transfer station. And I'm not sure if Mike wants to add anything, but in a nutshell, what the DPW and the town gains from this is a larger storage area for us, which we really need. We don't have an area like this that we can utilize. We're limited in where we can stockpile materials and keep them on an intermediate basis.
I think you covered it well, Bill. The only thing, hours of operation for a majority of the project, we did start nights this week. As Bill stated, they'll continue for the next couple of months. Most of the activity at the DPW will occur in the early stages of each night shift. Our permit is from 8:00 PM to 5:00 AM. We expect only to be working in the vicinity of the DPW from 9:00 PM to midnight, 1:00 the latest. Again, minimizing noise. I'll personally be delivering notifications to the residents on Middle Road so that they have a contact person if there are any noise complaints that we can address immediately. I think that's all I have.
So before we vote, I think Mike covered the issue for me, which is potential noise and light, because they're working, you know, 1:00 is pretty late. So nine to one with, I think Bill thinks there's maybe three houses that could be directly affected.
Looks like a handful. I looked on the map, yeah, not too many there, so clearly watching that closely. And Bill, you're confident that the description that you gave is manageable at this point, unlikely that we'll get an urgent need for other more disruptive activity as part of this process?
No, I think, I think they're very sensitive to our request about the noise and lighting. And in addition to that, if there is some activity during the day that we try to limit it to Mondays and Tuesdays when the transfer station operation is closed, so that we're not really co-mingling, you know, construction vehicles with residential traffic. But Mike's been great to work with on other projects as well over the past year, and I expect that if we have any issues or complaints that they will deal with it immediately.
Just to tag on to that, Bill. A majority of the operations that go on at night will just be dumping of the spoils. Any additions that we can provide for the South Pro DPW, such as spreading the spoils, adding binder, or any, anything to improve that area, we plan to conduct during the day, avoiding transfer station operations to minimize any night work and activity, so.
Kathy, I had one other question here. The, I see the, the cost, the payment for this is $0, so Bill, I'm assuming that what we get is an expanded storage area out of this process, so that's appropriate compensation in your view?
Yes, so the area, I suspect, was an old hayfield that used to probably get hayed every, every year. It's got a good thick layer of topsoil. We're gonna have them scrape that up, put down some good base gravel. So we'll get this topsoil to use. In addition, we'll have a nice, large area that we can work with for our operations, too.
That's the trade-off. Good.
I've been under the impression that you've been looking for intermediate storage for a while, so if this solves that problem, I think, yeah, one hand is watching the other.
Andrew?
Yeah, Bill, a quick question for you. So there's gonna be this night operation where trucks from New England utility contractors are coming in and out, and they'd be coming out right at the main entrance to the, to the transfer station, right? Which is usually, the door closes when the transfer station is closed, so would there be, do you have a concern about now you've got the door open in the middle of the night for a prolonged period, that if no one's monitoring it, that someone else could come in while? Or would the contractor be there kind of continuously so there'd be a presence there while the place is open at night?
There will be a presence. They'll lock up after they're done using the area at around midnight or 1:00, when, when Mike said. We also do have cameras that are active up there, so in the event we have some activity, we do have some way of tracking that and making sure we get in touch with anybody that might go up there.
Okay, great.
I do have one question for Andrew, I guess. As I read the release, it releases liability for acts that are, that directly cause damage.
Yeah, I did circle the word directly.
And I, the kind of stuff I, I read frequently includes indirect, although indirect is a slippery slope. So I don't know if that's worth the quibbling over or not, but has town council looked at this, Bill, at this release?
No, no.
Yeah. I don't wanna get too detailed on it, but.
So if you'd like to have council look over it, we can work with NUCO to come to an agreement, just to make sure.
Too worried about that, but it just sort of struck me when I read through that.
I mean, it is important because the, you know, the principle there is that if there's any liability that comes out of the operation, that the contractor's responsible for it.
Yeah.
So I agree with you that those are the two issues that I had circled, $0 and directly. I mean, the usual way you'd see this is, you know, all liability arising out of or related to something more broad like that.
I just reinforce that I'm spending too much time with the attorneys, my day job.
Okay, so do we want to approve this, subject to Bill running this by town council, as far as possibly adding indirect?
Or some other language there.
That's right.
Okay, so just let town council sign off on this for us? We approve the concept?
Yep.
And let Bill and town council take it from here, right?
Yep.
Is that okay?
Yep.
Yes.
All right, so someone wanna make the motion?
I'll so move.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, so thank you.
Thank you.
Mike, thank you, Bill.
Thank you, everyone. Appreciate the time.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so that's consent. All right, what have you got left? We did ARPA, we gotta do the warrant, our closely, let's get the select board office hours out of the way, that's easy.
Is this just the dates, or who's gonna do it?
Yeah, there's four dates, September, October, November, December.
Dates looked okay to me.
I can't find mine. What are your four dates? Okay, so September, any takers for September 10th, next week?
I'm flexible generally, so happy to fill in where others don't wanna do it.
I can do the last two, not the first two, if that helps people pick things.
I could do next week, for example.
Okay, so Sam is one. Anybody else for September 10th?
Uh, September 10th?
Next Tuesday.
What time?
6:00 PM.
Six to seven.
Six to seven.
I'm, oh, I can't do it that day, sorry.
Yeah, I can if I, if I have to. Tuesdays aren't great for me, that's my babysitting, my day, but.
Bring the babies.
Bring the babies.
Well, yeah.
Well, if you end up, Sam would.
Yeah, I'll, I'll do it.
I can do it by myself.
No, I just, yeah, I'll do it.
Okay, October 15th?
I can do that.
I am gonna be out of town that evening.
Okay, Al or Sam?
I could, I could do.
15th?
Yeah, I could do October 15th.
All right, I can do the 12th.
I can do, I can do the 12th, too.
Because that's Andrew and I. Okay, December 10th, Marguerite?
I can do it.
Okay, and anybody else?
For what?
I can do the.
The December 10th?
Well, 10.
Okay, and Al. All right, we're done with that. Okay, last thing is, we gotta go through the warrant again and talk about at least three things. Does everybody have the most recent draft in front of you?
Can I suggest we take a three-minute break?
Okay, all right, so we're gonna recess for five minutes, come back at 8:35.
Recording stopped.
So we're back in session at 8:34. Okay, so Mark and I looked at the index real quick. We think there are three articles that we really didn't. We either didn't finish discussing, we needed more information, certainly haven't voted on them. So I believe it's five, which is the Jim Haggerty's Minutes article. Al has some questions on that. I believe, we definitely didn't talk about changing the date of the, or changing the article that establishes annual town meeting, which is 17. And then we didn't talk at all about Joe Palmer's recall by law citizens petition. Anything else anybody think that we need to talk about again? We talked tonight already about the police staffing study implementation. We did that earlier.
I think we need to discuss the ordering of the articles as well.
Okay, so we'll do that at class. Any other article though to talk about subsequently? I think we voted on every other one of them. So will you look and make sure?
Sure. So the articles 10 and 11. Not suggesting we discuss them in much detail tonight, but you know, the working group that we set up to deal with this is meeting on Friday. That's the earliest that we could convene it, given everyone's schedules. So that's obviously cutting it right to the end. And you know, if we're able to come to a consensus on what this should say, would as fast as possible get it to Mark so that it'll be in the warrant to be approved on Tuesday.
When are you meeting?
Friday.
This Friday?
This Friday.
Okay.
Mark, could you actually just sort of review the calendar here?
So Planning Board had a, their next continuation of the public hearing schedule for September 9th. And we had hoped to have you wrap up the warrant tonight, have everything all set to go, and then get off to the printer. Planning Board asked for some additional time because I believe there's some additional comments they need to consider as to whether that, the MBTA community's bylaw is changed at their meeting on the 9th. So we talked to the printer and we will, you know, send, get the warrant all set to go on the 10th, after the Planning Board meeting on the 9th. So this is really, hopefully we'll get the warrant in good shape. I'll see if Advisory has any votes for me, you know, before we close the warrant. Otherwise, we would list those at town meeting. Still have some summaries and things to do. But tonight, you're basically finishing up the warrant in terms of the ordering of the articles, if there's anything you were taking out or anything in that. But you've now effectively have closed the warrant because the, the date for citizens' petitions has now passed. It ended yesterday. So you just have those two. So everything should be all done in terms of planning on the 9th. And we will just finalize format and get that off to the printer the next day or so.
All right.
After that.
Okay, but we should discuss 10 and 11. I should have circled 10 and 11. We should discuss those briefly tonight, even though we won't finish the discussion. Okay, let's start with hopefully an easy one. So Al, you talked to Jim Haggerty about number five?
Yeah, all set.
Okay. Anybody else had an issue with that one?
Nope.
It's pretty modern what you want to do. Okay, so we're okay with that one?
Yep.
All right, so again, Al, you want to make all the motions and Marguerite, you second?
All right, so I will move that we, let's see, I just have to think about what I'm going to say here. I move the article as printed in the draft warrant dated.
No, you just want to say we support.
Oh, we, yeah, I move that we support the draft wa, article five as printed in the warrant of nine, a draft warrant of 9/4.
Second. All in favor? Okay, that one's out of the way. Okay, then let's go to, let's see. Okay, let's just do, so we'll do the ordering at the very end, so don't worry, we're going to reconsider that. 10 and 11 are related and probably should, if they are on here, be together like this. So I think that part's true, right? You wouldn't want to talk about those separately. Okay, so Andrew, you think your committee will be, will vote?
Yeah.
On what to do Friday? Okay, so we know we're going to have another shot at this on?
Monday.
Tuesday. Monday is the Planning Board meeting on the 9th.
Okay.
Yeah, but we, then we decided that we were going to do what on the 10th? We were going to do a Zoom now, what are we doing? A Zoom on the 10th?
If you, if you want to finalize the warrant, if there's anything you need to finalize, I mean, if it's simply adding in whatever Planning Board does on Tuesday night or Monday night, and any formatting issues, I'm really not sure. I think that's pretty much.
I think the only question is whether there would be a, I guess if there was a substantial change to Article 10 or 11, it would just be as printed on the green handout rather than.
We certainly can deal with MBTA tonight by saying that we will, we just vote to, we can either say, we're going to do that town meeting no matter what.
Yeah.
And listen to it, that's easy, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, we're done with that if we say that, we're at town meeting, so we don't have to vote.
Yeah. We can always, and we can, I'm sorry, Marguerite, we could always put something else on the agenda for you to address any items in the warrant, and we can simply, you know, have you adjourn from Planning Board meeting to another room so that you can, you can do that there that same night. Just trying to avoid you having to do two meetings back to back where the second one is pretty administrative.
So we couldn't just do at-town meeting for this?
Yes, we could.
We could.
I would prefer to take a vote and have it. I know you can put it up on the screen, I just like the idea of having the vote.
So you won't vote now and not, you don't want it to say at-town meeting in the warrant? You want to vote?
We don't have it.
I'd like to hear what the Planning Board says, but I'm fine.
We could also do a quick, we're going to be in session on Monday night with them, so we can also vote right then and there too.
Yeah, that's, that's.
I mean, Advisory did some votes with us the other night, so we can also just do our own vote, once they have explained to us, answer the questions, we can do, we can vote right then and there.
Sure.
Okay, how about that?
Yes.
Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
All right, so that takes care of that one. But now, stay on 10 and 11 for a second. I read, I think it's very clean what the, and I think it's Al that sent the two.
I'm guilty.
So I'm fine with what we're doing to accomplish this. I still, and I'm not, I don't support the language in there as far as who the people are, I think it should be stronger. I, you know, the whole purpose of doing this was to try to get people who really understood the world of affordable housing, and I think that what's proposed now is pretty loosey-goosey. And we end up with people, again, that are well-meaning, but still don't know all the nuances and ins and outs, and knows how to really leverage a little bit of money that we have. So I wish it were a much more robust requirement to at least attempt to find those kind of people.
But we are the appointing authority, so we control that.
Yeah. So you know, there's another view that there are people who are, you know, including some of the people on, as part of this, this working group, who don't necessarily have those defined qualifications, but are, you know, well-meaning people who would, who could make a real contribution. And you know, you might, we have other committees where we're, you know, we want to find people for a committee that have a certain skillset, we just don't have them, right? So I think it does make sense to have the flexibility.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
So I think, the question is, is how much do you want to bind the hands of future select boards in terms of how they, they do things? So the compromise was to put in what I guess would be described as an aspirational statement rather than hard thing. I, personally, I'm, I'm in favor of not binding the hands of future select boards, that is, you know, because then we're telling them what they have to do and they can always just do what they want anyway, so.
Then the impact, the practical impact of doing this, if this is what goes forward and gets passed, is that all we've really done is remove the select board from the Affordable House Trust other than one person.
Right.
That's what this is doing. Reduces it, reduces it to five, right?
Right.
And then gets rid of the select board, that's all it did. If you were trying to appoint someone to the municipal technology committee, right? You wouldn't sit here and talk to someone who has no idea how to do anything with IT, even though they're well-meaning, they like internet, whatever, you wouldn't appoint, you just, you'd leave it vacant before you would do that. And maybe that's not a perfect analogy of this, but I, there's just people in this world that know how to do this.
That's what I'd do here. If I, if I'm appointing people on this committee, I would look for people.
Yeah, but you won't be here forever.
I know.
Okay, and the next group may be not caring, they go back to the old motto of just appointing anybody that steps up.
Well, yeah, isn't that their prerogative? I mean.
That's what we're trying to get away from.
Well, that's what we want, but you know, do, do we have the right to tell future boards how they should behave? I mean, that's why, the reason for putting the aspirational statement in there is to say, you know, this is what we think should be done, but, and in fact, there's no practical way to enforce that. Because you know, the interpretation of who has qualifications is ultimately up to the select board of the day. I, I think we have to have confidence in future boards' ability to do this, and you know, I think we can give them our thoughts and aspirations about what should be done. But at the end of the day, if, if the select board wants to appoint somebody with no credentials, no formal credentials, they can pretty much do it regardless of what we say. That's my, my feeling, so.
I just don't see what we've accomplished by doing this. So are all, you five, are you going in this direction?
Well, just so one, one very concrete thing we all have accomplished is consolidating two overlapping committees that have, that have been kind of bumping into each other.
All right, I wouldn't be fair, yep, that's, that's right.
Right, and getting the select board out of the.
Also, one reason I'm a little bit, you know, optimistic about this is, remember, this, this is a committee that is going to be different, it's not a talking shop. It actually has, in ways, it would be one of the most powerful committees because it has the ability to, without town meeting approval, buy and sell real estate. It would basically have a budget.
But it already has that. It already has that.
Right.
Affordable House Trust, absolute kin, buy, sell, real estate, make loans.
We combine expertise and money here in ways that it's not been combined before. That to me is.
I think.
What expertise, we're not mandating any expertise.
What is West Rose?
Well, I don't think you can mandate expertise.
So I don't, but Sam just said we're, we're combining expertise and money. Where's the expertise coming in?
In, in people that we're going to appoint, that I plan to appoint at least.
It's up to the select board to, to do that now, to find the people with the expertise and to make that decision. So you know, the buck stops here. I think the other thing that we are doing, and forgive me, is you know, we're getting the, the select board, which has a lot of stuff on their plates. And you know, this is a committee, you know, that will have a fair amount of work to do. I mean, I've been doing some of it, and I, I'm not doing enough of it. And you know, everybody sitting at this table has things they're working on, and I think offloading that onto people who will have more time to dedicate to this function.
Well, that part I agree with, that it shouldn't be select board automatically on.
Yeah, I, I, I see no practical way that we can actually mandate requirements, you know, short of, you know, having some sort of, you know, asking for people with, you know, a PE, you know, making that a requirement. But I, and I don't think we want to do that, you know.
And you think the five of you, that's pretty much where you are at this point?
No. Where does, what does?
Hold on, Marguerite, I'm talking about the five on this sub-working group.
Okay, we've only met.
Well, Marguerite, what's your question?
Hold on, Al, I'm running the meeting. Okay, so my question is, you guys have only met twice, you really haven't.
It's hard to tell because we've had one meeting where you had all five of us. We had one meeting where there were just three of us, and it lasted about 30 minutes. But I think at both of the meetings we had, we had, I felt like an emerging consensus around that language, that, the concept that is in there, okay?
Okay. So at one point, wasn't there two in there that needed to be expertise and that got taken?
No.
Okay, so.
Two of five, two of five was what we had always talked about.
But that's not in there anymore?
It is in there.
It is.
Two of five are supposed to be with some knowledge?
Right.
And then, okay, and then one is supposed to be the select board?
Is desired but not required that at least two members of the board shall have experience in one of the following: affordable housing, real estate development, instruction, social services, or finance. So it's, again, it's, it's an aspirational statement, but.
It's better than we have now.
Okay, so you think you'll be ready to bring forth the subgroup by the end of the week? What's your position is in this, right?
Yep.
Okay, and you're going to be able to get it into the warrant, whatever changes from what's there right now?
The timing is very close.
Okay.
All right.
Who, who put the language that's in there right now?
Al.
Okay, all right, so the subgroup will decide on Friday whether they want to tweak that.
Yes.
Whether to tweak it, okay, you'll get that to Mark.
Yes.
And then we won't have a chance to vote on that until town meeting because we're not going to meet.
I thought we were meeting on, okay, I thought we were going to meet on the 10th.
Monday.
But if we want to meet Monday night?
Monday night, we can do it Monday night, we'll have nothing to plan, but we can just move, once we're done, the Planning Board, we can move into room back there and vote on that one thing.
Okay.
Okay?
We're meeting, sorry, you're meeting virtually on Monday night or you're meeting in person?
No, we're meeting in person.
Okay.
They, they do the meetings like us.
So then we would vote both on, we would, we would vote.
First on the MBTA.
MBTA.
Yep.
Once we.
And then the, these two articles.
Right, then we'll adjourn and we'll go, excuse me, we'll then say, we're going to, bye-bye.
Town Ministry's office.
We're going to go into the, go downstairs or go into.
Okay.
Another office, and then we'll vote on Articles 10 and 11.
So I have, I have a question, Andrew, this is for you and Al. Westboro has an affordable housing trust fund situation that works pretty well.
Yes.
What is the language in their charge?
Okay, please correct me if I'm wrong, they don't have this language that specifies preferred experience.
Okay.
Yeah, I believe that's correct. They just have a committee.
Yeah, yeah.
Or rather, a board of trustees.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just saying, whatever they're doing, it's working. So, but I, I understand wanting to say that having expertise is a good thing, but again, there's no teeth in it really because it's saying it's suggested.
Correct.
I agree. And that's my, okay, so we've got a plan as far as voting on whatever the subgroup decides they'd like to see in the warrant after we're through with Planning Board on Monday. That is an in-person meeting, Advisory's going to be here too, so that's an in-person meeting for all three groups. Okay? All right, moving on. So the next one is amend town code possibly at this town meeting.
Hey Kathy?
Uh huh.
One small thing, Article 12 had a typo in it that passed along to Mark and corrected. Refers to the wrong chapter, Chapter 44B it should be, so.
Yeah, so the next one is Article 11, which is the actual doing away of Shopsey.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we'll vote on both on.
Okay.
Because to me, they're a pair, they go together.
Yeah.
Right? Okay, next one is 17, to possibly amend the town code relative to the date of the annual town meeting. And Andrew, I think has passed out what the bylaw says right now in front of you, which is no later than the last Saturday in March, period. And it's supposed to start at 1:00 and, and no later than 5:00, which we did not do last time.
So I thought that the, here's what I suggest. You know, there's, there's a section A, B, C, so on A, I suggest that we strike the second sentence, which requires beginning at 1:00 and then recessing not later than 5:00. You know, we, we did not do that last time. We started at 10:00 and I thought that was a better 10:00 AM. And the first sentence, it requires town, annual town meeting to be held on, on a Saturday, right? So that was a change that occurred. The idea was that I would increase, that would make it easier for people kind of like myself that, you know, have kids that do.
Sports.
Sports, et cetera, to attend town meeting. It, it really has not led to a dramatic increase in attendance at town meeting, hold it at Saturday as opposed to a weekday night. So what I would suggest is you just revise it so as the, it says the annual town meeting for consideration of all business, other than the election of town officers or other matters to be determined by ballot, shall be held no later than the second Saturday in April. It would just set the, the latest possible date that we could meet, and then give the select board the flexibility to meet.
What is it?
On any day of the week.
That's good.
Yeah.
So, and the idea is that we could maybe use a little extra time to prepare the budget and get the warrant prepared, but I mean, from my experience where we've had.
Work fills the space times.
Yeah, the last Saturday in March, and then we've had it in June during the COVID years, I don't think it really led to, you know, a dramatically different or better. But we always, we wait until the deadlines come and then right toward the deadlines are when the real action starts to happen.
Do we need to put something in there that says that it's the select board that sets the date? Or is that part of our inherent powers?
Jay Tullman would say it's our inherent power.
Okay.
And then the, you know, Section B and C, you could just, you would just strike those.
As long as he's a fine.
No need for those.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, God.
So we had one, we did the first COVID the very last day we could, which was the last of June. Then the second COVID, we did the last Saturday in May and got a lot of criticism for that because there was a lot of sports going on that day, and so a lot of people didn't come because of that. I would say, I just don't want maximal flexibility. I, I agree with everything Andrew said, other than I might say instead of the second Saturday in April, the last day of April, and really have all that flexibility in case you need it. Now, second Saturday of April is never going to interfere with Patriots' Day, so, because that's always got to be before that. Patriots' Day is third Monday. But I still like the flexibility of saying the last day of April. I mean, that way you've really got some, some choices here.
And again, I think that our survey said that weeknights are the preferred time, so let's.
But did that survey not focus on special town meeting the night of it?
Yeah, it was really focused.
I don't know if you, people would have, I wish we'd just, you know, ask any town meeting, but I think we specifically said special town meeting. The one coming up.
Yeah. I think, two things in my mind here, one, I'm fine with the last day of April, it gives us flexibility. I think we also need to actually pick a date for '25 town meeting.
Soon.
Quickly.
Yeah, soon.
And maybe.
Yeah, because remember there are departments like Carla and Brian and.
The assessors, actually.
Sibelli, that they absolutely, Carla would not want us to go into June or May because she's got, they've got a lot of work to do after town meeting to close out books and stuff. So I think to be considerate of them, I wouldn't go, I would not go past April, but I would like the, even the extra last two weeks to have a choice of if we need it.
I mean, are, are we prepared to actually pick a date tonight?
No, because Sam, we've got to figure out when we're doing the special town meeting too for the school, so that's going to influence our decision too.
But that's going to be in probably March, February.
No, it's going to be April.
April.
Right now, it's April.
Can I give you a, a piece of town meeting trivia that I find interesting?
Yes.
In March 1973, the town meeting ran four nights. It ran Tuesday, Thursday, and then the next Tuesday and Thursday.
Wow.
Same meeting, two weeks, four meetings, just same. And you know what? There were 436 people there.
Wow.
And the population of the town was a third of what it is now.
There must have been some dog fights.
There were.
Yeah, something must have been important on that one.
There was zoning.
Okay, Al, what do you, what do you want to do as far as the outside date?
Pardon?
What do you think about the outside date? Let's, let's focus on what.
I think, April 30th, which you dare not use, because that's my wife's birthday.
29.
The last day of April, I think is the right thing to do.
The outside, it won't, this will be, okay, Marguerite?
I, I think that's fine with me, if Carla's okay with it.
Carla.
I am confident she's going to be okay with that.
Are going to be.
And that's fine with me.
Pressing for a firm date as soon as possible.
Yeah.
But I think that window is plenty good enough for everybody.
Yeah. Andrew, you want to stick with 15?
That's, that's fine to say that the last day in April.
Okay, so let's get this right.
Last Saturday.
Okay.
Okay, we could say no later than last Saturday in April?
Okay.
Okay, all right.
Andrew, do you want to?
I'll just give this to you.
Yep.
So you want to get rid of the time completely, Andrew? Because on the next paragraph, it talks about, we, when we reconvene at 7:00.
There's no need for any of that.
So get rid of that completely. So we've got total flexibility, sorry, setting the time, everybody agrees?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Okay?
Yeah.
Do we want to put that in there? With the specific time and other details to be.
That's what we're saying, leave it out, Sam, so we've got total flexibility as far as the time goes.
I'm saying it's sentenced, it says the, with the specific date and times to be determined by the select board.
And now, we have in the past had a rule that said that, you know, the 11:00 rule.
Yeah.
Which I think is actually a civilized rule, and I think we ought to keep that.
So you'd keep the.
But the Hall sometimes says they want to.
Part B?
Well.
I think the moderator could set that.
I think the moderator, he says that every time. He refers to, I don't know, it was Robert's Rules or something, he says, you know, we conform, and this is what we do, and I've got, you know, I've got the right to extend it if the Hall votes for it, if we're in the middle of a.
It's usually the consensus of the Hall.
Yeah.
Or does he refer to the bylaw when he says that? I don't know.
I don't know.
The last Saturday, no later than the last Saturday.
We get a town council opinion on that one.
Yeah.
So can you find out from Jay whether we need to talk about 11:00? Whether it's already something that.
The moderator can determine.
And then Sam would like to say, no later than the last Saturday in April, at a time to be determined by the select board.
At date and time.
Date and time to be determined by a select board. Good. That sounds good to me.
Can we estimate when we're going to set that date for people, so people know when that's going to happen?
Not in this.
But I mean, when we are going to make that decision.
We'll do it, probably October, late October, maybe November. We did it last time in November, we'll get it done. But we really do need to know what's going on with the special town meeting too. The two are going to be connected. You okay with that?
To reset it at a night.
He's getting rid of these two paragraphs completely, right?
Yep.
And then up here, it's going to be the last Saturday in April at a date and time to be determined by select board.
Eighty tired people trying to decide when they're going to.
Yeah.
Yep.
And nothing about the time at all, unless Jay says you got to put it in there if we want to make 11 the end time.
Stop time.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, if we are, if 11's stop time because of Paul, then we'll set. Okay, um, are we okay with that one? All right?
Yep.
Okay, so let's, we haven't voted on this, so let's vote on that one officially. So, Al?
So I will move to support the change of, changing of the date and time of the annual town meeting as printed and amended on the handout from Andrew Dennington. I don't know how, any other way to describe it.
Second.
And included in the pack, included in the minutes.
All in favor? Okay, that one's done. Okay, last one is Joe Palmer's citizen petition for a recall bylaw. So we haven't talked about this one at all. So, Sam, what do you think?
I think it, it gives us the power to do something we shouldn't have, in a sense. Basically, take the Hopkinton bylaw and modify it to meet the objectives that Mr. Palmer lays out here. And I think that this is something that town meeting ought to be voting on, not us doing something here. So I don't think it's properly structured and I can't support it as it now stands.
Okay, so is this binding?
No.
No? Okay, so even if it were to pass, it's not binding, correct? Select board wouldn't have to establish a legal invalid recall bylaw model, right?
But it says that they require us to establish it.
It's not, I, I think, it's just, it's not, it's not binding or legal in any way.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I just, I just think, again, it gives us the power to do something that town meeting ought to be doing, frankly, if it were binding, so I just, I just don't think it's.
I think there are two issues here. The first one is, should there be a recall provision of some sort? And I have mixed feelings about that, but I think in general I am, I think there should be a recall provision. It should be very difficult to do. It should have substantial time constraints. And it should not be able to be done more than once for any particular set. I also think, you know, what's good for the goose is good for the gander and that there ought to be a recall provision for committee members.
All boards and committees?
All boards and committees. You know, the recall provision for the, the appointing authorities. But.
Okay, does anyone support this article?
As written, no.
No.
Okay, I mean, to tell us, it's got to be modeled on Hopkinton? Okay, so we don't think it is binding, correct? We're pretty sure of that. So even if it were to pass, it doesn't have any impact, correct? Everybody agree with that?
Well, the way it's phrased, anybody could move to recall anybody on any board and committee, correct?
No, it's elected boards. It's elected.
Elected, so.
Well, that's what Hopkinton says. Hopkinton's elected.
Just be planning and select, right?
Well, that'd be.
Library.
The Board of Assessors, the Library Trustees, the Moderator.
Okay.
Missioner Trust Funds.
All right.
So, you know, the school committee, don't forget the school committee.
Al's point, I actually tried this about 10 years ago and it went nowhere.
Okay, Andrew's got a motion.
I, I move that the select board support at town meeting Article 19.
Second?
All in favor? All opposed? Marguerite, do you?
Oh, no, I'm opposed.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay, 05 opposed.
Yes.
Okay. To make it clear, Marguerite voted not to support.
Yes, sorry.
Okay.
I think that's it.
All right. We did it.
Well, now, we can talk about the order.
Ordering.
Yes. Okay, so, um, let's pull our index out. And to remind everybody, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 are there because we think that Paul Semino will more likely than not put those on the consent agenda, at least consider those. So we think that those may end up on consent, that's why they're there. So the first substantive article is MBTA.
Good.
So, Al, what would you like to see reordered on this?
So I, I think the one thing we talked about was the appointments of the CPC as being reordered. That is, you know, I think that one does have real impact and I can foresee that being, you know, a late night, you know, we get our friends to stack sort of vote. So I think we ought to, I think this is actually a substantive thing that ought to be moved up. I would actually move it right after the zoning.
Okay, so do MBTA first and then put it right after zone, MBTA?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, anyone have any comment on putting Article 18 right after Article 8?
Okay, I'll say.
I'm fine with it there. I'd actually like to see it before Article MBTA, as a matter of fact, but I could live with it after.
Andrew?
I mean, I'm fine with where it is in Article 18, but if you wanted to move it up, I think that, I'd like to go after, you know, I expect that there'll be a lot of, people will be paying attention to the MBTA community, it'll culminate in this vote. And then, you know, I, I like the ordering of going from MBTA communities next to the rec. That's something that's significant. And I think that if we're going to move up 18, maybe make it after the vote on the rec.
Okay, so we've got three choices here. Al would like to see it come between 8 and 9. Sam would like it to come between 7 and 8. And Andrew would like it to come between 9 and 10.
I, I'd move to between 7 and 8.
Okay, second on that?
I'd leave it where it is.
Don't discuss it, somebody second it.
Oh, second.
A second. Okay, I'd leave it where it is because it's a citizen's petition and the two are at the end.
Okay, so, so everybody's got their, but Marguerite, the reason that those who are trying to move it up are doing it because they want to make sure there's still a healthy crowd there to vote that is not there just for that one article to, to, to support it?
Yeah.
Got it, okay.
Yeah, I think we're trying to avoid the repeat of the rec vote of.
That's right.
Okay, so then I see what you're saying, yep.
I mean, I could, I guess I could live with it before or after rec.
I just supported you, Sam, so.
Okay, so make it into 10?
Okay, so the question is, do you want it? We've got, let's say we got two very substantive articles, MBTA and rec. Do we want this to go in front of those two, in between those two, or after those two?
I would, I would recommend that it be the Article 8.
Okay, so you're saying.
Put it after 4?
Yeah.
You're saying before?
Yeah.
Okay, Marguerite?[1606.34]